The street component is a very expensive component. But like I mentioned, this is all public infrastructure, water, sewer drainage, traffic systems, stormwater, and of course, design fees. So I wanted to go over again the PIT itself, just to make sure, because these are, these are complicated tools, and I wanted to make sure we clarify for the public what exactly they are.
You mind if I, if I stop you, just if we have questions? Just going to the previous slide, that thirty-nine million, who pays for those improvements?
So it really depends on what the development agreement stipulates, right? But in the end, it's the developer who has to pay. The mechanism of whether or not they're reimbursed, that's what the council is considering today. And those are some items that the end of the recommendation is going to be to take this into executive session to discuss some of those provisions, just to make sure that council is fully aware. We do, at the last council meeting, the council set this public hearing and directed us to do a preliminary finance plan, so we do need to go over those preliminary numbers. We will be addressing those numbers at the second and the third meeting of these ordinances, so we do have time, but we want to make sure that we get council's input now, so that we can make sure we address those concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to go over the PIT concept once again, just for public knowledge. So if a person owns property outside city limits, that person would pay county, school district, and hospital district taxes. If they are inside the city, they would pay county, school district, hospital district, and city taxes. Now, those that own property within the PIT would pay like a city taxpayer, but they would pay an additional amount. So now we get to the actual terms. And so the two tools are used independently, or they can be used together. And we'll get into why the developer thinks it makes sense to use these together. So what is a TIRZ? So a TIRZ is a specific zone that is created to finance costs and promote growth in the area. When improvements are made to an area, property values rise, leading to additional property tax revenue. Those revenues can be used to cover certain costs. So I wanted to give just a basic example as a TIRZ, what that would... So let's say a TIRZ was established over property A, and property A is undeveloped, and it's worth a hundred thousand dollars. And it's projected that once property A is developed, it'll be assessed at ten million dollars. Now, that's an increase of nine point nine million dollars in value. So that would generate an additional forty-eight thousand five hundred in taxes per year. So the TIRZ would allow that future one to be used to pay off debt. And so that, that's basically the concept of the TIRZ, is it's using future taxes to pay off debt. So not touching the taxes that exist, the tax, you know, the existing tax base, it's just new taxes as a result of development. So as part of the, the request from the developer, the PIT-TIRZ request, they're requesting that the TIRZ be established on the twenty-three hundred acres for a term of fifty years, and that a portion of those new taxes that would be developed from their development be used to offset the PIT fee. I think it's best to show it in an illustration. So same three parts that we had before, outside city, inside city, inside PIT, but in this case, it shows the PIT-TIRZ. And essentially, with the developer saying, annexing to the city, this is the portion that would have belonged to the city, but under the PIT-TIRZ agreement, a portion of that would go to pay for the actual, well, to offset the PIT itself. Why is that necessary? According to the developer, property within the PIT is not as enticing as if it were just in the regular city or outside city.
Sorry, you said not as enticing?
Yes. So if a business wants to develop in this area, if they choose to develop here, and we just establish the, the PIT itself...
You're saying they're gonna want to go outside, right outside of the PIT?
Correct. They're not gonna want to pay not just the city taxes, now the PIT on top of that, when right next door...
That puts them at a disadvantage.
Right. And so ultimately, with the city, our goal is to grow our tax base, and not necessarily grow our tax base with homeowners, right? We want to alleviate the burden from homeowners, and the way we do that is by having additional businesses, industry, within our city limits, because not only is it property tax, it is sales tax as well. So within the TIRZ itself, the new ordinance itself, if the, if the council does wish to move forward, a board would be established, and the power, the duties of the board would be to make recommendations regarding the administration, management, and operation of the TIRZ to the city council, and to prepare project plans and reinvestments and financing plans to be submitted to the city council, and amendments to such plans.
Okay, go back one slide. You have, Dan, I'll give you a chance to catch your breath. You, on your example, you have the assessed value of a hundred dozen, I know these are for example only.
Correct.
Now, since we're using that, what I want to understand is, I mean, this hundred thousand, even though like I said, I know it's an example, but we're trying to be as real and transparent as possible, is this hundred thousand based on the current value of the land?
It is based on the benchmark.
Okay, that's what I want to understand, because what I want to understand is, where is the, I want to know the exact difference between what is actually now for raw land, and what is a benchmark, to see what that difference is, because there's a very, that's a very big gray area, and the reason I say that is because I want to understand what that cushion is for us to, I understand the development, I get all that, but I want to understand the impact that we're still not discussing, which is, what is it gonna cost us to police, what is it gonna cost us to fire protection, and all the other essentials that we still have to provide, once the development happens, because I need to understand where is, where are those funds going to be coming from? I mean, it has to be somewhere, and it's not of the people that already live in the city.
Correct. Yes, and that's absolutely correct. We do go through some of that in this presentation, but we actually have some of the information from the executive session on part of the items to be discussed, gotta be negotiated.
Then I will pause.
So just to go through the, sorry, this is, where's it, do you need this? So just to go through the initial development, and it's part of the figures that we'll hopefully go in through in executive session partially. So the total projected out of that first phase of four hundred acres at full buildout, which is estimated at ten years, ten years from now, will be valued at four hundred million dollars. And so the estimated property taxes to be generated by the city for those, for those four hundred acres would be two point six million, for the county, two point one, for the hospital district, seven fifty thousand, and for the school district, about five point five million. So when we're talking about the UBT tax increment, reinvestment zone, that's where we're talking about this...
The two point six million.
And how that will be used. The other note that I put on here is that for future phases, if approved, they'll each have their own PIT and their own developer agreement, so depending on how long that takes, the councils at that time won't make those decisions, but what we're focusing on, while the TIRZ is created for the twenty-three hundred acres, we're really focusing on this first phase. So, you know, the basic question, why, why are we even considering this? And it really has to do with annexation. You know, before twenty nineteen, the city had the ability to just annex. And I think the easiest example to give is, let's say, a new Walmart decided to develop in Eagle Pass, and it was just outside city limits, right? Walmarts have a lot of activity, generally a lot of sales tax. Before, the city could have just annexed, right? Now, the owner of the property has to choose to annex, and that really puts us at a disadvantage. And so the state has really, really forced cities to incentivize strategic annexation. And we understand where the state was coming from, what they were trying to do, they were trying to protect property owners, basically homeowners, who did not want to be part of the city from being forced to do so, but we feel a bit too far, because now they restrict our ability for commercial and industrial. So that's the main, one of the main reasons that we're considering this. So that happened in twenty nineteen. So essentially, in that last item there, so we do rely on growth and increase in tax base to cover increasing costs of service. The city focuses on commercial and industrial development to decrease the tax burden of homeowners. Cities like ours must now work with developers to create win-win scenarios for developments and annexations. So kind of wanted to put it down into two basic scenarios, the way we really have been reviewing this, and it has to do with basic services. So the issue with the city not choosing to move forward with this, is that we would not generate property tax, we would not generate sales tax, and in all likelihood, unless the state has a drastic change in mind in the future, that's for forever. And when you're talking about sales tax, especially, that is a lot of money, especially when you're looking at an area around four eighty, which, you know, you go to any large community, what do you see along loops? It's all commercial development, you see a lot of sales tax. And that, for the future, for the future taxpayers, that's a big loss, right? A potential loss. But what we have to do, we have to do our due diligence to make sure that in the short term and the long term, it makes sense to our taxpayers. The, the other downside really for the city itself is that the city already provides a vast majority of services outside, especially those costly services. So the only services that basically not provided are police protection, animal control, code enforcement, and infrastructure maintenance. Right now, our current agreements for fire service require us to provide everywhere in the county, so anytime a new subdivision, a new business develops outside city limits, we have to service it with no direct income. So that really puts us at a disadvantage. So we either have to revisit how we do our service contracts, or, you know, we really have to be really proactive in our annexation plans. So then, you know, to the heart of it, how does it impact the current city taxpayer? You know, with these, with the PIT and the TIRZ, you know, when we're talking about the property, their property taxes that are currently paid, those are separate in part, those are allocated to the general fund. When these PITS and TIRZ are established, it's strictly those funds that are coming from that district, and they are kept in account if they're separate. The city retains oversight, yes, there's a board, and, you know, we have to follow the agreements that are approved, but that is separate, they're not co-mangled, they're not used, and this is, to Mayor Potem's point, this is where our agreements need to be foolproof to make sure that at no point do we need their tax dollars to cover the additional services. So the TIRZ ordinance and finance plan has to allocate at a minimum sufficient revenue to cover the new costs due to this development, so the current city taxpayers do not subsidize the additional costs, and the development will generate sales tax and other fees that can be used to enhance services to our residents without relying on additional property taxes. So creating the win-win scenario, and this is what our focus is in the discussions with the developer, of course, again, we have, we must generate sufficient new revenue to cover the additional services, cost, supplies, and equipment, so the preliminary investment is on two point six million, and that's at full buildout, so we're talking, you know, twenty, twenty-five years down the road, and that's adjusted for inflation. City must generate sufficient new revenue to cover the infrastructure maintenance costs. You know, it's great that we're requiring concrete roads, but those won't, they last a long time, but they don't last forever.
Right.
And when we have to replace them, it'll be a hefty cost then, too, so we need to make sure that we have sufficient revenue to, to cover those costs as well. The city must generate additional sales tax and other unrestricted revenue to be used for services and projects in the long term, and this is just for the greater good, for just our basic services. And then a reasonable amount of TIRZ revenue is made available to offset the PIT fees for the property in question to retain competitiveness, going back to the graphs. This will only be successful is businesses develop in this area, right? So that's also one of our goals, to make sure that it's covered.
So when it comes to determining our estimation for services, what, what kind of data are we using to make that?
So we get consults with departments, there is some items that we want to discuss with council on executive session, because especially when it comes to maintenance costs, and we're talking about future maintenance costs, twenty-five, forty, we do want to hire the consultant to be able to provide an independent analysis of that, because that is very difficult. Construction costs change drastically, year to year.
The target for construction.
And so that, honestly, out of everything, that is our biggest construct, because twenty-five years, you know, I don't know how many of us will still be here, but within the city.
Well, we have terms in it, so.
Yes. But the last thing we want to do is to put whoever's in our seats at a disadvantage, where now we have to cover big costs, because we do not pay.
And just to clarify, so for services, do you also mean like fire and EMS, or are you specifically talking about construction services?
No, fire, EMS, animal control, code enforcement, full service. So I don't know if there's any, like I said, there's more detail I need to get into, along with the discussion on elements on the development agreement that all tie into this, we do have the draft of the preliminary finance plan that we do need to discuss, but those numbers depend on the feedback of council, so that can't be finalized until we do develop.
I know, I know everything that you're giving us is financial, and this is not gonna be in your area, but I still need to make it known that, I mean, I know there's some potential for, I mean, where this part of the development is for homes, but you also have the industrial, and that is, I don't want to say that's not my, I don't want to say the word concern, but I guess I'm just leery about if we've looked into any kind of environmental impact of how this type of development will, I mean, potentially impact the areas that are budding around that area? I mean, we, I mean, we should all be aware of what's out in that area, and I want to make sure that we're not affecting anyone's neighboring property in that area. I mean, not only close to the river, I mean, there's also, you know, the pecan orchard in that area, I mean, we need to make sure that we're cognizant of other people's property as well.
Of course. And that is an element that could, could be included as part of the developing, council suggestions, but those are some discussions that we can have in executive session.
Let's go ahead and open it up for, for the public. I know that there's people that want to speak on, on this issue, so we'll start, who wants to go first? Mr. Urwina, I believe you wanted to be heard on this?
There's no mic right here, too?
I'm fine, thank, I think y'all can hear me, right?
Yeah, the mic is picking you up.
What's that?
The mic is picking you up.
Okay, good. I wanna, I already take my time, so sure, but, um, thank you all very much. My name is Ugo Urwina, I am the owner of Heavenly Farms, located off of Loop four eighty. We have approximately three hundred fifty-nine acres in our orchard, which happens to be adjacent to some of the properties being discussed today. More specifically, the certificates of obligation, which have been indicated in the paper, that will be applied to the four hundred sixty-one acres. Now, I'm not here to create any animosity or friction, if anything, I implore you all, and I appreciate you all looking together to work collectively and thinking outside the box. At the same time, it's important that we understand the definition of the word of a developer. A developer, whether from the outside or inside, when they come in, their job is to look for a specific piece of property that they seem deable, they can do something with it and improve its value. So when they find a piece of property, their job is to come in here and bring in the infrastructure, develop it, which is why they're called developers. They develop the property by establishing sidewalks, roadways, utilities, et cetera. On the city side, the responsibility of the city is to help them, to give them guidance and direction around how they're supposed to, where they make those connections, where they do the times for electricity, water, roadways, et cetera. At the same time, the city's responsibility is also to help the developer go out and visit with local communities, outside communities, for instance, Dallas, Austin, and so forth, so that those communities can come in and want to invest in what the developer is doing, so that the developer, once they've done this, they're able to bring up and sell the property at a premium. We need to understand that there is a definition and a level of separation that needs to occur. Now, I'm all for support, it's important that we all support each other, but it's also important that the city understand that it's not the responsibility of the city to incur this type of liability, because there is a liability, and y'all don't understand those whole aspects, I'm not saying y'all don't, but if y'all don't, if you have any questions, I can help y'all afterwards, y'all think, y'all know where I'm at, okay? The second piece is, as a community, we have had a lot of, I guess you could say, you want to call them hickies, because we get them all the time, from us making specific mistakes that we shouldn't be incurring. For example, what happened with the county, to me, it's an embarrassment, it should be an embarrassment to the entire community. We are better than that, and we need to hold each other liable, hold each other to a higher standard, and I don't see that, we need to start working toward that, okay? And by us having a ten-year outlook, a ten-year plan, and actually cascading it within our website, within a link and saying, this is what we're doing, we will get and generate organic growth from the outside, and want to grow within the city, so that people come in and have investors, okay? Now, another thing that bothers me is a little bit, is what happened with the bridge, we should have had that within the ten-year outlook. We didn't do that, we didn't have that, it's a slip-up, I hope it was just a slip-up, I would hate to think it was a purposeful slip, because there's no reason for us to have a, a private entity managing that for us, we should have taken advantage of that, and I know if I would have been a part of an elected official, would have fought that to the tenth degree. Now, I'm willing to take on the ownership of the four hundred sixty-one acres, or anything like that, the twenty-three hundred acres, I'll buy them at the appraised value, and I will develop it without the assistance and the support of the city, other than what I know and know the wallet. It's out there, I think the city needs to protect itself, and I'd be willing to do that, okay? Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? You can state your name, we know your name, because we're there.
Is it, is this working? Can you guys hear me back?
Yes.
We're good, or can I go over there?
We can hear you.
Okay, all right. Listen, first of all, thank you for this opportunity, and basically, what I wanted to speak about is, once again, as a citizen of Eagle Pass, I am concerned about what you as our city administration are proposing, it's very concerning to me. And I just wanted to bring up a few points that I wanted to see if you can enlighten me, because I, I was here last time to propose that taxpayer dollars not be invested in a private equity investment, that was my primary concern, and I asked you to consider not developing a second entity that would be above you all to help organize the improvement zone. And I left with that, from that meeting, feeling very unsure of what the progress was going to be, and I know at the end of that meeting, councilperson Monica, I believe, Ms. Cruz, said that in the past, she had not been that open or that precise as to, you know, getting information out to the citizens of Eagle Pass within the city limits, and I understood her stand, because I know that she is a real estate developer, I know that she is also the county developer, and, and I just don't understand why she's not here today, but that's a whole different issue. I was concerned about that moving forward, and now, once again, I hear something that we're still progressing along the same lines of more investment of taxpayer money, and I was concerned, so I had to look up what it means to be, pardon me, I'm gonna get my glasses on here, what a TRIZ zone is, so just a paragraph here, it says, and this is from the state information, okay? I better do it, because I'm at twenty percent here, so here we go. To be designated as a TRIZ zone, an area must be unproductive, underdeveloped, or blighted, and substantially arrest or impair the sound growth of the municipality creating the zone, retard the provision of housing accommodations, or constitute an economic or social liability, and be a menace to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare in its present condition, and use because of the presence of a substantial number of unsubsidized or substandard slum, deteriorated, or deteriorating structures, the predominance of defective or inadequate sidewalks, or street layout, faulty or layout in relation to size, adequacy, accessibility, or usefulness, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, the deterioration of a site or other improvements, tax or special assessment delinquency exceeding the fair value of the land, defective or unusual conditions of title, or conditions that endanger life or property by fire or other cause, be predominantly open and because of obsolete plating deterioration of structures or site improvements, or other factors substantially impair or arrest the sound growth of the municipality, and there's more, but I'm not gonna read them, I'm just, I'm just wondering, what are we doing? What are we doing? I, I believe those descriptions identify a lot of the existing colonias around Eagle Pass, you know, and, and I believe some of the conditions that I described, even I identify some of our neighborhoods within the community, and it's concerning to me that, that we as taxpayers, that our money or our good credit is going to go to fund something that doesn't help the citizens that live within our community, and I'm concerned about that, and I know that a lot of people are too, just that sometimes they just don't have the means to, to come out and say so, but I'm a guy that's been waiting, like I said last time, for about thirty-five years, to get my drainage problem fixed in my backyard, but the water rises two and a half feet, and I've been waiting, and I've been patiently awaiting, and I've spoken to every person that I could, and it still hasn't happened. And I know I spoke to you about Roosevelt Street in the city, and goes for six blocks, and it's a drainage ditch, people can't get out when it's raining. I mean, there's so many areas that don't have sidewalks, I mean, there's so many issues within our community, and based on that description, why would we want to annex an area that's, that's like that? I mean, where, when we've got potential around communities, colonias like Lo Muy Bonito, or Las Quintas, or Seco Mines, or, you know, areas where we can help people and help citizens, and not necessarily, you know, go and incorporate it, but offer an opportunity, and I'm, I'm just here as a citizen voicing my concern, that I have nothing against progress, I am all for progress in raising the tax base, but I am concerned when taxpayer dollars are going to be invested in creating another entity besides the other entity, because according to what I read, there has to be an organization that's gonna oversee this, and according to Mr. Jesse's presentation, you know, the revenues are gonna have to go up, but right now, like I was here the first time, times are uncertain, and our revenue stream is being affected, and you all know that, you all know that. I mean, I applaud Mr. Diaz's efforts for trying to get a health organization in our community that would address certain health issues, I, I applaud Mr. Davis and his evidently status as, as, you know, a statesman.
Elder.
Mr. Garcia and Ms. Monica, I mean, you're all professionals, Mr. Mayor, and, and I just, I want to say that we really need to think about what we're doing here, because this is long-term, this is the future, this is our community, and there's a lot of areas within our community that need to, honestly and sincerely, they need to be addressed. And, and I've got, like I said, I've got nothing against progress. And, and I've got, like I said, I've got nothing against practice, progress, there's a lot of private equity investors out there that would be willing to fund this. But why, why are, are you pushing this so fast without any, you know, town meetings or explaining what's happening? I can, I could, I could see Mr. Jesse even having a problem explaining what's up there, there's so much. And we're ramming through this, and, and there's gonna be a lot of questions, there's gonna be a lot of concerns. And I just don't want us to become a bigger spectacle than we already are. And, and I care for my community, and I care for everybody that lives here, and I care for you all as, as our leaders, because you represent your constituents. And you should consider the bottom line. For the next year, what's happening on that river is gonna affect the revenue stream. Do you really, do you really wanna go and do this? And that's my concern, and, and I just, I'd like to hear some of you all talk about it, you know? Are you really wanting to do this? Because, you know, right now, it's, the future seems a little bit uncertain. I'd, I'd say, I'd say address the big issue right in our backyard here before we go out and start giving a lot of money to, to, you know, for bonding or for infrastructure that could be brought towards our citizens. I just, in, in my mind, I feel that we really, really need to think about this. And, and I'm just one citizen, but I know that if you gave the citizens the choice of an election, to say, hey, do you want your infrastructure repaired, or do you wanna go build roads and infrastructure out there four miles away? I know what they'll say. And you know what they'll say. We want our drainage problem fixed, we want sidewalks, we want better programs, we want, we want the community to be addressed. That's what they're gonna say. And I just, I'm here just to let you know that I'm concerned as a citizen, and I know that if citizens are, citizens are watching this and listening to this, you're gonna get questions. So be prepared, be prepared to explain this, because I, I didn't understand it, and I'm an educated individual, I had to look it up, and there's more to this. Look, look on the state website, it's there, and it's, it describes a lot of our communities. I thank you for your time, and that was just my say, and hopefully you'll take it to heart.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you. I mean, those are some, some valid, some, some points, right? I just wanna make clear, I mean, our Public Works Department is doing an amazing job as far as improving infrastructure. I, I always like to tell the public, all the sidewalks they've done, all the streets, the street maintenance, very proud of the work they've done. We're not finished yet, there's still room for improvement, I agree with Mr. Fuentes. Another point also, that we try to get across, is that the tax, the city taxpayer is not paying anything for this, it's only the people that would buy into that area that have to pay tax to upkeep that area. Am I correct?
No.
I want, I wanna second you on that comment about our Public Works Department working very hard, also that it is that many of our communities, or the city, you know, the city has grown out, and many communities are, are, like we've called it lagoons, or like Rosita, and all those that do not belong to the city. And like Jesse said, right now, as of 2019, we cannot just annex them. I know I had that question before, and, and I brought it up, why don't we just add this or that other neighborhood and fix it up? And we cannot, and there's rules, regulations that we have to follow, that, you know, and, and I know because Mr. Fuentes has brought up that same concern multiple times, of why don't we just go and fix this neighborhood? And it's not because we don't want to.
We can't.
We can't. I just wanna put that out there as well.
Neighborhoods like, like Las Quintas, for example, they would, they would have to have an election to choose to be part of the city, for the city to do the improvements.
Exactly. And, and I just want the neighborhood, or not the neighborhood, the community to know it's not us just not wanting to go into a neighborhood and fixing it, but rather that we can, because like you said, there's a process to it.
And it's just, and not just that, it's also, they have to pay city taxes, right? So it basically be them funding improvements themselves.
Right.
If they were, you know, going without having to pay city taxes, unfortunately, it would cost those people. But to the mayor, I mean, we're talking about these, these dollars, these dollars do not currently exist, and they would not exist. And I'm not speaking in terms of, you know, in favor or against the measure, it's just that it's dollars that would exist if they had access, right? City taxes are only assessed if they are within the actual city limits. So we're talking about whether or not we're spending public, you know, actual, not the public money, yes, it's public money, but it would not have existed if the annexation had not gone through. So, you know, it's, but it's definitely not taxed on, it still exists to taxpayers.
Yes.
It's important, I appreciate what you're saying, it's important for the city council to educate the whole community, utilize the website, because just about everything you said, it's, whether it's valid or not, people don't know. And then you have to make it easier. For instance, I was trying to locate the map earlier today through the portal, and it's, I assure you, I understand how to get through a portal, but it wasn't easy, you can't get down, you can't get the map, it wasn't that simple. So for the most, most folks, they ain't gonna be able to acquire that map, and I think that's what Mr. Fuentes was trying to allude to, you know? Put a link, just a quick, simple link, to see what's going on, communicate, be as transparent. That way, there's not a lot of questions around, what are they trying to do, what are they trying to hide, or their specific, you know, agendas that's, you know, underneath it, you know what I'm saying? So I think as a city, I think we're, we're destined to grow, and looks fantastic down the future. But let's open it up, let's communicate, let's try to work cohesively and collaboratively, versus trying to separate and only have a segmented folks within the community that are benefiting and so forth. Let's open it up, let's help each other, like I said, bring some organic growth.
We have somebody, Ms. Johnson. You could state your full name, just so we could have the recording.
My name is Sonia Reliz Johnson. I first wanna thank Mr. Fuentes for his passion. I've been to many city council meetings, and day in and day out, he's obviously ridiculously concerned for the community, and not a lot of people take the time to come and voice those concerns. My biggest thing is, if he would see us not as the problem, but as the solution, the city hears you, Mr. Fuentes, they know that there's stuff that needs to be improved, but you guys are limited by your size, you are limited by the revenue, there is no way that you guys can generate more revenue, you already do it. Your Economic Development Department does a fantastic job of trying to incentivize businesses to come, but even if they come, where will they be established? To actually create the revenue that you guys need to make those improvements that he's requiring and requesting. So this is truly the city's working with developers, with incorporating, to try to solve those problems, to try to generate that revenue. Now, they're not using any of the existing revenue, they have any existing tax, actually, not even our taxpayer money, our tax, well, right now, we're not incorporated, so as a city, you guys don't get any revenue from us. So as us incorporating, you, you can actually get that base. Right now, you get nothing from 2,300 acres. Now, what does this do? We're investing, the city is not investing any of their current funds, any of their current revenue. We're investing a big amount of money, I know the number was on the board, and God, if it was scary to you guys, it was scary to me. And we are taking that responsibility, because we could do it slowly, like a lot of people do, and then build the, the revenue little by little, not for you guys, for the county, for the hospital district, and for the, the school district. If we steam this, if we roll this and make it big, because we know, we, we see the bridge, we see the industry, we see the industrial parks across the street, if we spearhead it, you guys can capture a big chunk, and of that, they can use it for those improvements. This is just a generating revenue mechanism that the state has to allow the cities for growth, for rapid growth. Again, nobody will pay additional taxes. The only people that will pay taxes is those that choose to be within the area. Right now, the only people that would pay additional taxes would be me, because I haven't sold anything. Nobody else, well, me and my, and my partners, obviously. I honestly commend your, your personnel, because if they've been concerned about one thing, it's making sure that any expense that the city might incur, that be now from, with your professionals, with your legal fees, and in the future, they've made sure that all of that is covered from the revenue that we generate, they've made it a point, you cannot touch any of the existing taxes. They've made it a point, they've, we've talked to projections, show me how in other municipalities, those are the revenue values that you estimate to bring. Okay, if that's your estimate, I want it lower. Your projections need to be lower than the average of an industrial park. I mean, they've been so conservative on these numbers to make sure that the city does not use any existing revenue for this, on the contrary, generate revenue. They even told us, okay, you have to cover costs with our part of Advalorim, don't touch hotel tax, don't touch sales tax, don't touch personal property tax, all that, the city would get free and clear. It's just a mechanism to make sure that all of Mr. Fuentes's concerns are addressed in a proper manner now, not 50 years down the road, when it would take me to actually do this. The reason for the 50 years, it's because it's gonna take that long for us to collect that money to pay what we're putting in now. Again, if you guys have any questions for us, please, I'm more than open to address them. This is really, and, and again, I love that we're working with the city, and we're working with the county, this is how it should be, developers should work hand in hand with our municipalities to address your needs, not mine. We should know what you guys need, and your Economic Development Department won't let me, we are meetings in and out, we have this warehouse, we have this warehouse, we have this, this is coming, where? We constantly send them, well, this is a possible layout in our land, or on another land, what do you want from us? That's the conversations that need to happen, so that we grow together. I shouldn't be mandating how you guys grow, it should be a team effort. And that, and this tourist board and all that kind of makes that happen. It forces us to truly consider each other's needs, and see how I can meet yours, and you're like, well, I need a fire station, okay. Like, grow together. Because at the end of the day, I am a resident of Eagle Pass, Texas, I have always been a resident of the, of Eagle Pass, Texas, and of Maverick County. I want the best for this county, I'm not leaving. I want the best for the city, I'm not leaving. And I think that's what most developers should put, put forth, what is the best for this municipality? Thank you for your time, if there's no more questions.
No questions.
So I, I wanna let the whole public know that we, we're, there were some big valid points brought up. We do have some, some questions for legal, so I'm gonna make a motion to take this into executive session, but we will consider each and every single one of your comments while we're.
We have a.
Can we just close the public hearing?
Yes, let's close the public hearing, oh, my phone turned off.
6:42.
6:42 PM. And we have a motion to take this into executive session, by Councilman Diaz, a second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, all in favor, unanimous, this item will be taken into executive session right now. We're gonna go and discuss this, and then we'll be back.
You could call in the other ones if you want, or if you wanna. You could call in the other executive session items that are on the agenda.
Yes, so we're also gonna take into executive session, 13, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 551.071, consultation with legal counsel regarding capital improvement projects, funding options, and possible action in open session regarding same. 14, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 551.071, consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiations for the solar eclipse events and possible action in open session regarding same. These three items will be discussed in executive session.
And the, and number one is also pursuant to Section 551.071.
And what about number 12?
Yes, that one as well.
Can, can somebody also make a motion?
I'll make a motion to take item number 12 into executive session.
We also have a, a motion, and a second, the motion was made by Councilman Diaz, a second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, all in favor, it is.
What is that item agenda?
This is. Item number 12, yes. Authorizing interim city manager to execute a development agreement between the city of Eagle Pass and Sonia Johnson, Bayer Johnson, Linda Samora, and Sergio Samora, for the development of approximately 461 acres of real property. So this item was, will also be discussed in executive session, there is a motion, a second, and we'll take a vote, three of us vote, Mr. Davis abstains.
And then it's also pursuant to Section 551.
Yes, all these items will be discussed pursuant to Section 551.071, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel due to legal, legal questions or ramifications. We'll go into executive session at 6:44 PM to discuss, and we'll be back. Go back on. Okay, they told me that, that we're good, so returning from executive session, I have here that it's 8:00 PM, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. It's 8:00 PM, number one is the public hearing, this item has been read to the record at this time, I'll entertain a motion on item number one. We did discuss this in executive session.
So I, I think we, we, what, part of what we had discussed is taking into account some of the comments that we had heard from the public. I, I would like to make a motion to proceed, and ta, taking into account what we heard to do public hearing workshops, sorry, town hall meetings, to engage the public and educate them on the process, and, and how they can get involved with the process, and to proceed forward with negotiations on the development.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Diaz, a second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, all in favor with said motion? It is, is it unanimous?
I'm gonna go ahead and, I'll abstain for right now.
Okay, we, we have three in favor, and Mayor Protem Davis abstains. Item 12, authorizing interim city manager to execute a development agreement between the city of Eagle Pass and Sonia Johnson, Bayer Johnson, Linda Samora, and Sergio Samora for the development of approximately 6, 461 acres of real property. This item was also taken to executive session.
I know we had some concerns, or did you wanna go ahead and make a motion, or, I mean, because.
No, do you wanna?
Okay, I know we had some concerns, and we wanted to go ahead and authorize the interim city manager to negotiate only, not execute, but go ahead and negotiate with the parties.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Davis, a second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, all in favor, unanimous. 13, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 551.071, consultation with legal counsel regarding capital improvement projects, funding options, and possible action in open session regarding same. No action, no action needed for this item, we'll move to 14, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 551.071, consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiations for the solar eclipse events and possible action in open session regarding same. This was also informative, right?
No, actually, I would like to make a motion to authorize negotiation and execution of interlocal agreements with surrounding counties in the benefit of public safety for the event.
We do, we, yeah, we did need action, and Mayor Protem Davis with the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Diaz, discussion, all in favor, unanimous. We'll go to the consent agenda items, which is item two through six. If nobody, unless anybody wants to move one of these items and discuss them individually, I'll entertain a motion to approve said items.
So much.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Davis, second by Councilman Diaz, all in favor, unanimous, items two through six. Seven, second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 20, peddlers and solicitors, Article I, Sections 20-1A, 20-3, 20-5, 1 through 6, 20-6. dash three, twenty dash five, one through six, twenty dash six, six, twenty dash nine, twenty dash ten, one through three, twenty dash eleven, one through four, twenty dash fifteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, renaming itinerant merchants to merchant and it, uh, itinerary of, uh, vendor to vendor and by adding, uh, provisions, that was a misspelling there, yeah. Provisions for unlawful conduct and allowing vendors to sell at various times on city property and issuance of a permit, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Mr.
So, so there should, there should be a correction here. There's a typo. It should be itinerant instead of itinerant.
Itinerant.
Itinerant, yes. So.
Itinerant.
I know last meeting we brought this up and a suggestion was to try to make it a little bit more simpler and so that the community, anybody trained to get this permit can identify what it is. So that suggestion was just dropping the word itinerant, so it can be merchants and vendors and still proceeding with the same, um, changes that we're trying to make.
Perfect.
Not a problem.
We have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Davis and a second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion, all in favor. It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Eight, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council, the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, authorizing city manager and finance director to act as the city's authorized representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the community development block grant program through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the city manager to create required planning documents, including but not limited to the consolidated plan.
Mayor, council, um, at a previous meeting, uh, the council took action to accept the ability to become an entitled city.
Right.
So basically, this means that the city is now able to receive funding directly through HUD. Um, as part of the process, the onboarding process, uh, we've had several meetings with HUD, um, and, well, one of them is authorizing who, who are gonna be the authorizing officials, but second is the. So it is very, very difficult going through the state. You know, we're, we're with the big boys in the right end. So basically, the federal government's, uh, way of handling this is really leaving it up to the localities. When we were dealing with the state, they basically guide you by the hand. They say these are the old activities, you know, we prefer you follow these rules specifically. Uh, with, with HUD, basically, we come up with our own plan. And so the first step is kind of with a five-year plan, uh, to use the CDBG funds. Uh, in terms of dollars, just to put it in perspective, we were receiving about a hundred, three hundred and sixty thousand every four years through CDBG. Now we can expect around three hundred and seventy-five thousand every year. So the purpose of this plan is to identify the needs of the community and then using that, that assessment, coming out with grant projects for each individual year. Now, it could be the same project every year or multiple different projects, but that's what the plan comes, comes up. So basically, the, the resolution just authorizes the city membership to begin developing that plan. Now, the funding cycle does start October first of next year, and we're required to have this plan approved by Au- by August of next year.
Okay. Are, are we planning on doing like community level surveys or, or how are we gonna collect?
There are specific requirements. So there's, uh, HUD is very, very big on citizen participation, so they have a lot of requirements. We plan on going an extra step, um, but that's how we come up with a five-year plan. And so they have assigned some consultants to us, and so those consultants will assist you.
I mean, yeah, so you can like give us some subtopics of what we can try to identify and maybe we can try to come up with a creative plan to, to implement.
I know that through this, we've, we've discussed about the possibility of, of this opening up a sub for funding for a domestic violence shelter, correct? This is the one?
Yes.
Great.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Diaz, a second by Mayor Protem Davis. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Nine, consideration and possible approval of an agreement between the City of Eagle Pass and the Green Company for golf course maintenance in an annual amount not to exceed three hundred sixty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents.
Just to recap, so we did go up a bid for this item. The Green Company had submitted a bid. It was over four hundred thousand dollars. Council directed us to negotiate that price. Uh, so after meeting with Parks Department and, uh, the contractor, uh, the proposed price was three hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight forty-eight, sixty-four. I know the council had requested some information and that was sent out. We also put a copy on, on your desk there. So if there's any further questions for Parks or us.
Nope, I did receive those numbers.
I mean, I did have some questions, or I guess I would rather go with them a little bit more specifically in, on a one-on-one. I mean, but if y'all wanna continue moving forward, that's fine. I'm just, I'm not comfortable voting on it as of yet, but.
So I, I think there were some pending questions. I'd like to make a motion to, to table for now.
Okay. We have a, a motion to table this item. Was there a deadline on this?
We have a. So it was awarded, it was technically, so council took action to.
Yes. So since it was awarded, we technically don't have a, a time limit, uh, to negotiate, but of course we wanna do it as soon as possible. Uh, so again, if there's any, any specific questions that you all need from, from us, please let us know, uh, because we do wanna have someone permanent on doing the maintenance of the golf course. Uh, so that's something.
I remember it was awarded. When was it awarded?
No, it was, it was, uh, you all gave us approval to negotiate. So we don't have anyone permanent. We have a month, my, by month, a contract. So that's why we wanna move on to having either this, this gets approved so we can have a permanent contractor, or we go out again for a bid so we can have a, uh, go through the process and get someone on a permanent basis.
Okay. Well, I'll second your motion today.
We have a motion to table, uh, by Councilman Diaz, a second by Mayor Protem Davis. Discussion. Uh, the only thing I would ask is that we, uh, if we could take the time and answer, get all the questions answered so we can make a decision and not have to.
Yeah, cause I don't wanna be bringing it back or postponed.
Right.
Either, it's unfair to the, those who bid, or I mean, I understand we need to move forward or the, but I need to, yeah.
Yeah. If, if we could just bring it back in the next meeting?
If we can have the, the questions so we can answer them.
You, I mean, I don't know if the.
I can meet with you individually then.
Yeah. You'll get the questions individually. So we have a, a motion to table, a second, discussion. All in favor, to table? Unanimous. Ten, consideration and possible action on awarding slash rejection of requests for proposals, RFP twenty-twenty-three dash zero fifteen for comprehensive compensation study services.
Yes, Mayor, council. So we did receive two proposals, one from JEH Consulting and one from Octagon Consulting. Um, we did interview the firms and the recommendations to proceed with Octagon Consulting. Um, both of them do have extensive experience with, within this field. Um, we, we did discuss several important topics with them, with the directives of council. Um, so we wanna move on this as, as soon as possible. So the, the proposed price is about forty-five thousand dollars for the study.
This is very important so that we can make sure that the compensation rates are fair throughout the board with the city. And the last time this was done?
Well, ten years.
Ten years. So I think it's, it's time. There is a recommendation with.
So the recommendation is to allow same amount to negotiate and execute the agreement.
Okay. We have a motion to approve that recommendation by Councilman Garcia. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mayor Protem Davis. Discussion.
I was gonna ask you, do you, I mean, have you, I mean, I know you had the two that, uh, do you have any like recommendations and stuff from other municipalities that have used them, or how did you all come with this consideration?
Yes, so we did send out, uh, reference forms, same, both of them did come back with good references.
Okay.
Can you, or let us know of what it is that you are requesting in this evaluation more than anything? Like, uh, suggestions, like, we kind of recommended some, right, of what we're looking for, for the staff. But how you push them forward to them, that's what interests me, you know?
So basically, what we, the information we received from both companies is that, uh, they do an assessment of the region, the whole border area, cities with the same population and, and cities of, of, of private sector to, uh, related to the type of, of duties or jobs that, that we have, uh, as the different positions have. Uh, they also do, uh, one-to-ones with employees. So they gather, uh, uh, selects employees for the different positions. So they do one, one-on-one, uh, to get more information from them. And then they basically come up with a plan, propose it to the city, uh, based on the mark, uh, current market and then how to get to that market and the percentage that the city wanna be at.
Random employees are picked, or are they?
Yes, it's random.
Handpicked by our staff?
No, it's random. So they basically take over at that moment.
The compensation study for every.
Every position.
Every position.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor? Unanimous. Eleven, discussion and possible approval of the historic revitalization program funding with revisions.
we, uh, we made last year. So last year, we created two pilot programs that we wanted to test out in the community. Uh, one of which we brought a couple beams back, which was the business improvement grant, which essentially helps businesses, you know, uh, better their, their, their buildings. Uh, this one specifically taps into the hotel occupancy tax, and what this one did is that it allocated two hundred thousand dollars from the revenue that we collect from hotel occupancy, uh, towards the preservation and restoration of downtown. Now, hotel occupancy tax, uh, is a restricted fund, therefore it cannot be used for things like, you know, road improvements or, you know, salaries, uh, specific to non-turistic, touristic related, um, items. So it is a fund that is very specific in its use and therefore can only be used for certain things. So, uh, this one is a, a program, a pilot program that we did start last year. Uh, again, the same amount that was allocated last year, we're asking for again, two hundred thousand dollars. And essentially what it is, is that it's a more robust, uh, program than it is the facade improvement grant. The facade improvement grant, of course, uh, allows reimbursement up to twenty thousand dollars, uh, for any improvements done to the facade of any historic place in the downtown area. However, this one goes a little bit step further and allows it to go up to a hundred thousand dollars, uh, with, of course, the review of a selection committee. Now, uh, I'm just gonna read this real quick. The historical revitalization program funds up to a hundred thousand dollars per project for an eligible site and structural improvements to existing businesses and properties located in this designated area of the downtown. Uh, the historical revitalization program funds will be available upon dissection and approval of the release of the funds. Uh, funds are limited to a maximum of a hundred thousand dollars per commercial property. Again, uh, that's for a big project. It can always go below, um, or the maximum, again, is a hundred thousand dollars. Now, so what is the process? Uh, the process is that all eligible applicants will submit their contest application to the Economic Development Department located here in City Hall. And when the application is completed, the applicant will submit their application along with the required documents to the main street manager. Uh, all applicants, as I mentioned, will be reviewed by selection panel and the audience will notice of the program and who the winners are, uh, will be, of course, sent to them in writing. Now, uh, what is eligible? Eligible, uh, applicants are those located between Commercial Street, Converse, Ford, and Garrison. All eligible applicants must submit their historical revitalization plan for their building, including images and the current state of the, uh, of the building, and images of the building in its historic state, meaning if they can find all photographic, uh, all photographs of what the building used to look like, that way the committee can make a decision. Uh, vacant buildings can apply, but they have to have, uh, they have to at least attempt to, uh, get a historic designation. And then the historic designation process of the property must be submitted to the Texas Historical Commission, uh, thirty days after it's been approved. And the applicants shall not be involved in any litigation that would otherwise affect this project. Um, all applications for the historical revitalization contest are subject to the available funding, and generally, funds will be awarded on a first-time, first-serve basis. So how do you know if you qualify? Uh, the building structure for the improvements in the commercial property have to be in the commercial property, uh, for which the application is being submitted, and it must be at least fifty years old. It can be old, right? Uh, the improvements must exceed at least fifty thousand dollars in expenses, and the property must be at least five thousand square feet. Uh, the commercial property for which the application is being submitted must be current and all cities, uh, taxes, property taxes, and not otherwise, uh, be indebted to the city or for any services or any of the like. Uh, the use of the funds will be focused on the exterior, meaning that people cannot use this to make any improvements on the inside. It's only for the exterior. And they do have to, uh, follow any and all building codes that the city, uh, has. Uh, the proposed improvement project shall follow all local and state building codes, and any proposed improvements shall follow applicable, uh, historic district design guidelines, ones that were presented, uh, last year. Okay? Now, who's in the committee? Uh, we do intend to, we already have this committee, but we do intend to, of course, uh, see if, uh, you guys are open and available for it, but we do intend to have a city council member, uh, the county commissioner for precinct three, which is the one that covers the downtown area. Uh, we also have an architect, um, or an engineer, of course, to assess the, the project, an attorney, and a local historian or history educator. Uh, this, as it was presented, is a bit of an improvement from last year, and the reason why is because we have now added a scoring sheet. Okay? So now, uh, we're looking at three major things. The visual impact of what this project may have to the, to the downtown area, uh, with fifty points, um, an extent of improvement, um, you know, how much is this gonna affect and improve the existing building, and the financial impact. How much, uh, private, uh, private funds are going into this versus how much would be, of course, allocated funds? Okay? Um, this right here, it just essentially goes over, you know, what happens after the program has been approved. Um, I know it's a quickly, you know, presentation. Again, this is a project that was presented last year. Uh, it's just the second iteration of the program itself. I don't know if there's any, um, questions or comments. Otherwise, we'd like to open this up as soon as possible to, to get people that are interested in applying.
I mean, I, I think this is just, uh, another tool to improve the downtown area and beautify existing, uh, businesses, buildings. So this is great.
You, I was gonna ask you, is the county contributing to this? I mean, I mean, just curious, cause I know you have the county commissioner. I don't have anything against that person belonging to it, but I mean, I'm just curious.
Uh, funding was, no, the, the county does not contribute to it. The funding does come from the hotel occupancy tax.
Right. The, the, the last round, it was, uh, wasn't it Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
That's four.
That, that's four?
We might, we might have just got the wrong one.
Okay.
It's the one that, uh.
Okay, yeah, yeah, cause I, I downtown, downtown is four.
I mean, cause now, in, in, instead of the commissioner, I just have some, why don't we just have a member of the community?
A community member?
We definitely change that.
Yeah.
Could be a downtown stakeholder.
I would rather have someone like that. That way there's more transparency from the, the, the taxpayer. I mean, like I said, nothing against this, you know?
Agreed.
You can always.
That, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
I like that idea, actually. Because they already have, you know, they're already participating in it, so they can might have, they might be able to add to it.
I like that change.
We can make that change for sure.
Okay. Great. And, and the fund, this fund has two hundred thousand?
Yes, so it'll be the same as last year. Um, it doesn't necessarily mean that a project will get off, uh, four hundred thousand dollars. It just means that one project can get up to a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. You could do four projects of fifty thousand.
Yeah.
We did last year.
We did. We did. So.
Very successful, by the way.
So three last year, um, included a private investment of just the outside of, uh, it was north of three hundred and forty thousand dollars in private investment on the outside. That's not including any improvements that it did on the inside, um, which of course, uh, can mean the fire suppression system, you know, I mean, uh, any things that just need to get improved on.
This will help us revamp that area and do it faster, so.
The only thing that I don't see is like, I don't wanna call it a safety net, but for lack of a better words, is that, is there anything that you have, some sort of a caveat to where they have to be in business for a certain amount of years after borrowing this, or this award is awarded to them, or if they're gonna sell, I mean, you know, we need to be a little bit cautious, cause we're still, even though it's not direct taxpayer money, it's still, it's a room type, because I know we have that like on the facade grant, but I don't know if we're actually following. I've never seen a report that we wanna make sure that those that were awarded before have actually stayed open.
You know what? The, the, a good point that, that I'm thinking about is, yes, what if you, I mean, in that scenario where the city's like, okay, here's this money, and then the owner fixes it and then sells it?
No, I believe they can't sell, right? I had that question when you invited me once on that board.
Yeah, you cannot sell it for three years after you renovate.
Okay.
I, I think. I, I think I read that right.
Yeah, actually, that's right. We did have this conversation on the.
I mean, I don't have an issue personally with the, the selling of it. I just want to make sure that, the idea is to generate activity. You know what I mean? And I want to make sure that there's, there's going to actually be someone in there, you know? Generating sales tax and business activity.
This is not, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
As I said, this is not intended for households. This has to be a regular.
Right, no, no, no. I know, but that's what I'm saying, but if they just do it and it stays vacant, it doesn't do anything.
We'll, we'll make sure we have a clause that says that.
We did put in there that if you are vacant voting, you only qualify if it's your intention to go up for historic designation to at least have it like on the registry. But yes, ideally, it is somebody generating.
Okay. I mean, because remember, we do have that other ordinance that y'all had brought forth about the vacant buildings in downtown. That's why I'm saying I don't want it to conflict. Pay attention to what you're bringing up.
Do we have a motion to approve this program? We have a motion to approve by Councilman Garcia, second by Mayor Protem Davis.
With a change, with a change.
With the, with the changes, right, Council? All in favor? Unanimous. Do we have a, a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Mayor Protem Davis, second by Councilman Garcia. All in favor? Unanimous. Meeting adjourned at eight twenty-five PM.